They called meeting in order if you'd say and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor Paul.
Every problem tonight we thank you for allowing us to come together, thank you for your blessing and our life. We thank you for our community and your help in our community. We thank you for those who serve this community. We ask your blessing on them. We ask that you help us to be all we can be as a community, to be an example of what you can do with a people, with a community. That you get all praise, you get all glory in Jesus' name we pray.
What? She's coming. Okay, we'll call vote Mayor Melissa Hayes is absent. Alderman Ward one Jeff Botkins. Alderman Ward one Jason Osborne here. Alderman Ward two Mark Greeney. Alderman Ward three Adrian, or Ward two Adrian Saunders. Alderman Ward three Juven Moss. Alderman Ward three Kent Shoemaker. Okay, public comment, we have Adam Grove with Farmers Elevator.
Farmers Elevator would like to put an offer in on a piece of property in the industrial park. Northeast corner, there's five acres. You see our offer, seventy-five thousand dollars for five acres for the construction of a Anheuser's storage facility. If we take action tonight, Farmers Elevator will pay for an appraisal. If the appraised value of that land comes in under seventy-five thousand dollars, our offer will stand at seventy-five thousand dollars. If it comes in over that dollar figure, we'll rescind our offer and we will meet again as board to decide what we want to do from there.
You got some reasonable offer, gentlemen?
Well, I mean, like we've talked about, I mean, I think to me it seems fair. I do think, you know, since they're offering to pay for the appraisal, there's no downside to the city. I mean, to me, the industrial park is always for sale. So we've got a business here in town that's interested in purchasing it. And if it appraises for less than that, the city is to keep the difference. And if it goes higher, then we haven't lost any money by paying for an appraisal.
I'll make a motion to sell for five acres to the Grove for seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to sell. I accept the offer from Monroe City Farmers Elevator exchange for seventy-five thousand dollars for five acres of land in the industrial park.
So it's subject to the appraisal?
Subject to the appraisal, they'll pay for the.
In accordance with the settlement.
Okay, all those in favor? Any one pose? Motion passes. Okay, we need to approve the amended amendments from the February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four meeting.
I'm going to approve the amendments from February the twenty-second.
Okay, and a motion and a second to approve the amendments from February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. All those in favor? Motion passes. Okay, counts payable for March seventh.
If you're looking for invoices, we redid our process. So all of these invoices are right here. So just if you want to go through the face sheet and whatever ones you have a question about or want to further investigate, we'll pull them out.
It has one rule on there.
I believe that is a written version.
Yeah, it's a written version. It has to do with the solenuses that he has.
I think so.
Harold Smith is what being caught up with.
Oh, I'll address it in my report on site about it though.
Hey Kevin, I see that Kendrick Long care is on here for a hundred fifty dollars. What did he do?
What?
Kendrick Long care, have him back on the first. Know what he did?
I have a clue.
I were paying him a hundred fifty dollars, I know it's a small amount, but.
Oh, I didn't be mauling back.
I don't either. Wouldn't have anything to do with snow or no or nothing like that.
Yeah, no, we don't pay him to do that.
I don't think. Make way, I was thinking here. Almost at the top. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, damn, on the top. Just seems out of place. Looking on this sheet, it says number eight.
Oh, so that's my report, this right here.
Oh, that'd be thirty down.
It should be right behind the minutes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the counts payable as presented on March seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Motion and second, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, motion passes. I have this to read, AmeriCorps Week is twenty-twenty-three proclamation. This shouldn't be, to be twenty-twenty-four.
I don't know, I think there was miscommunication in the dates. He showed up tonight, come on up, because I don't know the details yet, but Melissa.
Okay.
If you remember back in February, she was talking about a proclamation.
Okay, yeah, I remember she did this.
And that's the proclamation. And I have all those, I have all the details, I'll let him.
Okay.
All right. For the record, my name is Harold Smith, I am the Douglas Community Services. I am the coordinator for the retired and senior volunteer program in northeast Missouri. We partner with a number of nonprofits in an eight county area, including Monroe County. The one thing that these nonprofits all have in common is they run on volunteers. They could not do what they do were not for the senior volunteers. And the government agency in the umbrella under which it runs is AmeriCorps. A couple of the partner agencies are the Nutrition Center and the Food Pantry here in Monroe City. So that's why I'm here making rounds with the city councils where we have partnerships. And next week, March tenth through the sixteenth, is AmeriCorps Senior Volunteer Week. And we have submitted for your consideration the proclamation that would make that designation for next week in Monroe City.
Okay. So I read through this.
Sure.
Okay. Whereas services a hallmark of the American character and has the unique ability to bring people of all backgrounds together in common cause. And throughout our history, citizens have stepped up to meet our most pressing challenges of the day by volunteering in their communities. And whereas AmeriCorps Seniors Program provide opportunities for more than two hundred thousand Americans to serve their country through service at nonprofit schools, public agencies, and community and faith-based groups across the country. And whereas in Monroe City, Missouri, dozens of AmeriCorps seniors, volunteers of diverse ages and backgrounds, help to meet local needs at multiple locations of Monroe City by responding, tutoring, or mentoring children and youth, supporting veterans and military families fighting food insecurity, and supporting Christmas benevolence programs. And whereas AmeriCorps seniors volunteers encourage collaboration and partnerships leveraging millions of volunteers in service and acquiring the support of business, foundation, and other local partners to increase the effectiveness of their initiatives. And whereas AmeriCorps senior programs bring people together across race, age, and zip code to address critical issues facing the country, forge relationships, and cultivate mutual respect, and help build resilient and thriving communities. And whereas AmeriCorps senior volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas through their service, AmeriCorps senior volunteers strengthen the lives of their families, communities, and northeast Missouri as a whole. And whereas National Service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas AmeriCorps Week is an opportunity to recognize the dedication and commitment of millions of Americans who have served in AmeriCorps seniors and their community partners, and to encourage more Americans to follow their footsteps in service. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Jason Osborne, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Monroe, do hereby designate March twelfth through the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, as AmeriCorps Week in Monroe City, and urge citizens to thank AmeriCorps senior volunteers for their service and to find their own ways to give back to their communities.
Could I get a, could I get a picture with proclamation, with you and me in the proclamation?
Sure.
So I can prove that my boss where I was in.
Old business that has Robert's Garage and Towing update.
Robert?
Robert's Garage.
Yes. So I don't know if you guys have, I'm Brian with Robert's Garage. I don't know if you guys have been out there lately or not. We're wrapped, we should be wrapping up construction hopefully this week. We should hopefully invite them next week, should be starting to move stuff in there. So by April first, we should be fully staffed over there and be there around the first. As Bobby had stated last two meetings ago when we were here, just want to see if we get annexed into the city. Just want to see if you guys had talks about that or where we might stand on that.
So the issue, and I need to find out if there's an answer to it. The way I, when I look at the Rawls County assessor's maps, your property is not contiguous with the city limits. So we need to figure out a way, if one, we can annex something that doesn't touch the city. And if we can, how we go about doing that? So I was told the city of Perry may have done this. So I've been playing phone tag with the Perry's city attorney to find out how they did it. So should have an answer pretty soon.
Okay. So when is the?
Oh, another possibility, I don't know if the neighbor, I mean, if the neighbors between you and, say, the bank all wanted to be part of the city, that would also take care of the issue, but then you'd have to talk to them.
Yeah, because just my understanding was if the property on the south end did touch, part of it was on the city from what I was told and what I have seen on the map. But I could be, I could be wrong.
And I could, I was going off what the Rawls County assessor showed on their maps, so that would be off too.
No, I get it. We're just want to touch with that. And then the twenty-third, I came up and did apply for a city business license, so either way, that's given. So just waiting on that.
In fact, if you plan on staying until for the whole course of the meeting, you can pick it up when I go back downstairs.
I can do that, just say well, I'll have him get it ranked up, be ready to go. So I did stop over there tonight, but everything is looking good, getting all the rock called in. There's still gate to be put in, which could, I think, maybe a little bit later date, but that's going to be gated access in there, so. That's I can say, there's plans, come back the next meeting and see where we're at from there.
Thank you. The next is mayor's report, but she's not here. Kevin, I guess you can come up here because it's my understanding you had some concerns with the Tessie on payroll system, your department.
My guy did.
Okay, you want to come up and talk?
That's all I got to say, was having trouble from day one.
Like such as? Well, you've got problems with it too, your vacation and stuff.
You never got your vacation straight, did you? Nope, none of them, got that straight up yet.
That's, that's an easy fix, I haven't had time to sit down one-on-one with the employees and get those numbers updated.
So, and then I, I guess several of your employees are having trouble.
You got, some of them have to get in on the computer, the computer's been kicking them out. Sometimes it takes them ten, fifteen minutes before they can clock in.
And I know some of them can clock in like from their home.
Sometimes it don't even work, period. And, yeah, and some of them clock in at home and start on the clock and charge you overtime for five dollars.
Well.
That's all their complaints right there that I've got. But, I mean, you're paying however much a year, plus soon as they clock in, you're paying overtime right there.
And I know my dad was having trouble because there wasn't a computer to clock in on.
Wherefore, you clock in by seven twenty-five and you got you straight. You didn't get ten minutes or whatever. Which adds up to eighty hours, sometimes if they might get twenty hours of overtime for doing nothing. But that's up to you all. That's the complaints we're getting.
Are we able to just elect to do a plain old payroll?
I mean, we can, but that's going to sink a lot of time.
Even if we talk.
So this is the first I've, I've heard. Obie and I have talked about his vacation, and I've let him know that it's a fairly easy fix, honestly. I just need the time to sit at home with him. He's provided me some documentation for that, but this is the first I've heard of the city department and those issues. The other departments.
The mayor had a meeting with all the employees and they had their complaints to her. And she said y'all was probably going to do away with it. So they had all changed the next meeting. I don't know which way they're going. Wishy-washy, whatever.
Well, we talked about this two meetings ago. And you told me then you thought you would have it fixed, and it's not fixed yet. I know you're missing with a lot of other stuff.
Yeah, and we don't have feet.
But.
Well, even Jackie has offered to come in and do payroll.
Yeah, that would be two hours if you.
The issue with that is it's not just payroll. It is several reporting aspects of it that have to be sent off to the state in timely manner. Your labor statistics reports, all of, there's, there's that side of it that's got to be, you know, recorded properly and sent off to the state in a timely manner. There was a lot of holes, gaps where it was timely, then wouldn't be timely for six months. So there's that side of it, if we can get back in-house, that's time consuming. The issue that they're specifically talking about is a government requirement is the, it's called MFA, multi-factor authenticators. They weren't going to go, weren't going to force third-party human resource companies that did payroll to go live with it until the end of this year. Well, in a matter of six weeks, they decided, no, in six weeks from now, we're going live. And gave them six weeks to get everything up to par and ready to go. The day, and, and most of the companies did that, most of the companies were able to do that. The day that they went live was also the day we cut off our payroll. The entire MFA system on the government side crashed into the payroll systems with it. And what he's specifically talking about, the clock in issue, was that they, when, when they went live with it, it triggered the employee to have to set up a multi-factor authenticator. So they had to set up an iOS scan or a PIN or just another security component for them to be able to get into the system. Most of them set up PINs, most of them had issues the first time and didn't have issues beyond that. Any employees that had issue with it usually came in that day and I helped them with it.
I know.
Think it's still an issue, is it?
My mom is trying, has been trying to print my dad's check sets from home, she can't get on it at home.
Well, he's not even in there.
Why?
He was not put in there, not by me.
So how's he clocking in and out?
Is he clocking in and out?
I don't think he is logging in and out.
Yeah.
Robbie's clocking in and out? Yeah.
It takes him. See this.
Oh, you're, I think he, not here yet, sorry, I'm sorry, he's still in here and.
Oh, that's his, yeah, his brother.
Yeah.
That's for my break, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes, he has to use the computer and he said that half the time, I don't think they have a good computer down there. And my mom brings the check sets from home, but she hasn't been able to, because she can't get on it. They won't let her, so.
I'm going to throw it out there, I remember if we do a wrong, do away with the Tessie.
I mean, gradually, I do it, gradually let her get, where they can get it all worked out, go back. The old clock never did fail us, I mean, punch in time card.
I mean, that's not, can't be so, where the guys, that was my suggestion months ago because it just statistically, guys who are in the field and show up at a shop and that's where they start their day, go out, have always preferred being able to use a, a card to punch in.
Well, that's what they've got down there, right?
Yeah, we got time, we still got time clock down.
So they can clock in, clock out, and then you all put in their time or?
Yeah, I could do that, that's, I mean, that would still be.
Because what they're going to be eventually, the supervisors do it, right? Or do you do it now?
I used to always do their paperwork and, you know, go off their time card and then I turn it into.
Because right now they're punching the time card, correct, and doing that?
I've got to punch in a time card too.
Yeah, because they don't trust the system.
Punch in a time.
Because it takes them ten or fifteen minutes to try to get clocked in, because Robbie has been having trouble too.
If you want to just go to doing the time card and, and breaking those time cards, make sure you sign off on them so I don't have to call and say, hey, is this, is this accurate? I want to play any of those numbers.
Will that work?
That's how we always did it.
I know, what I'm saying, will that work for you? Work for the guys?
Time for me, but I'm just. I don't know about the other guys, I'll, they're going to.
Well, I don't think he'll clock in now, but still he could do.
I'm just picking you up and.
So would we?
If you get his, what, if you get his vacation up to date and he's maxed out, or is he going to attempt to get penalized for losing all that vacation that he's been over with?
Yeah, I mean, everybody's vacation and sick time is not correct.
Yeah, but your vacation should be, ain't you got a certain limit that you?
Yeah, it hasn't been right from when they started this.
That's what I'm saying, you, you, he's got a, will he get penalized from?
No.
Do you bring it up to date, will he get penalized for being way over, or will it just drop off?
Well, neither, that's not the only, the only option for it. There's several ways to get it correct. We can raise parameters for certain employees, because his, his parameters are different, like his, he was grandfathered in. So stuff like that isn't going to be an issue to fix. I have a lot of flexibility on what I, you know, could make out in terms of setting that up. Now, like I can speak for the gas guys and the electric guys, they like Tessie on, they use it without issue. If there's an issue, they text me.
I've heard a little different.
They very quickly come into the office and.
They do like it, Kevin?
They like it, especially two, two guys, other gas guys particularly.
I've heard.
I mean, they can handle it, or whatever you want to call it. Don't mess up on them, I can live on ours. Electric guys, I know some of them screw it up too, so.
I've made a lot of adjustments where previously there was three different categories of how the guys got paid. There was callback time, call-in time, on-call time. And none of that was ever like set up at Tessie on. So I went in and set it up where they can select which one it is when they're, you know, they're called back or called in. They select it from a dropdown and the, the rate of pay for that is a preset number. And for that entire time, that's what, you know, they're paid.
Do they not, do you guys not have a good computer where you're at?
Yeah. Robbie's on the computers, but he can't do it on his phone.
But can he do it on that computer down there? Can he do it on that computer down there?
Yeah, sometime.
It'll, it'll not, he said it takes about fifteen, fifteen minutes because it'll kick him out.
Yeah, I mean, we got computers everywhere. I can say the greatest, but it works.
But you said he was having trouble clocking in.
Yeah, but I don't know if it's the theater or it's the test site. There's a problem.
Is it possible that it could be a Wi-Fi connection issue? It's called.
Sometimes we have trouble on their phone, it'll be the same thing.
Well, they're in a mental building down there.
Yeah, if there's a mental building.
When we can't clock in, happens when she made these papers out, it's called punch, miss punch. We fill it out. See what I'm saying? If it didn't clock in at seven thirty or whatever, wouldn't clock him in, we got to fill this paper out. Miss punch, whatever day. More paper out. When it was simple tell before. Those guys, as they computerize it.
So what do you all think, Juven, Kent?
Have to work.
You gotta get with the times, you can't keep. So if they fill out a punch card or a time card and bring the blue wheel in or off.
As long as Obie's, no card's not wrong.
So you, if you do a time card, they do a time card and sign, and you sign all on it, she'll enter it. Will that suit you or?
As long as they get the vacation everything right.
Well, she's going to do that.
They might have to print like pay stub if they can't get it online. I think it's a way, this, I'm just going to put it out there, what my personal feeling is on it. I think it's a waste of money for no more employees that we pay. We're in a crunch that we're in and we're going to pay, you know, we're paying the fee.
Mayor, I want to know how much it is per?
So I was sold the fee for Tessie on was only six thousand dollars.
It is.
You'll split four pay fee per hour to do payroll than that.
I strongly, I, I mean, I don't know. Gary and Jackie both said it was the easiest task when they were here to do payroll.
Did that, did that back me up on it last time saying that it is definitely like a, a. Did that, did that back me up on it last time saying that it is definitely like a, a hard time job when it comes to the payroll for almost sixty employees. Fifty-eight employees.
I was thinking your motion.
You could bring Jackie in and still say money might hurt a few hours.
Are we locked into a contract though? That's what I wanna know.
We were told by Tim that we could walk away at any time.
I don't really answer that.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, we have a motion in a second to do away with the Tessie on payroll system. All those in favor?
Uh.
Aight, opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Okay, next.
City clerks report.
Okay, um, AP update. As you can see in the previous, accounts payable, it was a drastic dollar amount difference. Um, the check register sheet that you have, that is, um, everything that a check has been cut, that's straight out of G-Works. There's a check number listed, I decided to go with this report that kind of validates that it was paid more so than, you know, just the verbal that it's been paid. There's a check number next to every single, um, business, shows the dollar amount and every single one of those checks having left the building. During that process, we also pulled out, um, anything that would have been double paid and this was the result. There's over three hundred thousand dollars worth of bills that was approved two to three times that if change didn't happen, would have been paid twice. This stat.
Every hundred thousand got paid twice?
No, that's not what I said. I said if we hadn't made the changes we did.
Okay.
And drastically approved it in a, a rapid timeframe, this would have been paid twice, multiple, more than twice. Um, we had my mayor come in, um, and assist us with it, or we never would have gotten that come under the stack of all the past due, that payments that needed to go out. Um, Diva came in and assisted Alex and I in the new legal to redesign our process, um, make it a lot faster, a lot cleaner, and just get out from the mountain that piled up. Uh, and we are, I would say ninety-eight percent current. Um, I think there's still a few little invoices that we have, uh, questions on. Um, but I would put us at after this check register with all the good checks and dollar amounts on it, it would put us at least ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of today we've paid. So that's a huge relief, um, something nice to have off of our line and outlets's to-do list. Uh, lead line inventory grant, um, I got in touch with Dan Dover, Dan Dover, um, and he gave me, uh, quite a few, um, a lot of articles, a lot of resources, that's gonna help us with the lead line, um, inventory grant, we already have the grant. Um, but there's a couple hoops we need to jump through with the states and then get, uh, contractors in here to, um, give us some official bids and get moving on that, cause we are on a time crunch on that, so, um, I've made a phone conference with him tomorrow morning to get moving, um, make some progress on it. And do you guys have this in your folders?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I do need, um, an approval on this. Uh, this was for the county line road project, uh, and it came from Shannon Howe at Howe Company LLC, um, and from Dorothy Walsh, which is the, um, environmental assistance grant specials personnel that's assigned to us. Um, that the materials and labor is six hundred and sixty-three, it's not reimbursable, but they can't move forward until this is, um, approved and and paid in order, I guess. So we'll need a motion to move forward with that.
This is for the county line road?
Uh-huh, yes.
Is that even still in play?
And that's gonna be part of my report as well.
Okay.
So we can table, let's send this report.
I guess.
How it works.
So they already done this work?
I think, I didn't, are you looking at the email?
I'm looking at it. No, I'm looking at the wrong thing, the six hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Yeah. Yeah.
To relocate a line.
I believe it's. Yes.
So they already moved them?
No, they have not, they don't have one until.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Okay, I'll table this.
Mayor, didn't we kill the county line road project?
That's what I was thinking, I thought it was no more.
Why do we spend a month of work with?
Well, nobody's authorized any money to be spent.
Uh, the USDA change order was wrapped up. And this is just copies of, um, the final letter, uh, kind of going over everything. The last final invoices and the last few things that they approved, some of those still obviously have to be completed. Um, and then the last page is there, um, pretty much our action file and cell phone map that gives all the invoices, the payment dollar amounts, just a little bit with the project. Oh, and, uh, what I really wanted to address, um, for this is, uh, March twelfth, the president, vice president of the regional national USDA office, uh, will be on site for Monroe City to tour the wastewater plant. They only tour, uh, so we get four projects a year and Monroe City was selected as one of the facilities that they wanted to tour. Yeah. So we'll be looking for anybody now on March twelfth. Do you have the time for that? Uh, I do not, they are going to let me know once they get it narrowed down on, uh, when they'll be coming. But it'll be in the afternoon at some point. And I don't have an update on the budgets because I still do not have an audit, the mayor has been calling him multiple times today. Uh, I'll touch base with her tomorrow, see if she, uh, heard anything out of him today. And we can move on to the bids for the mow. I've got the other big comparison, uh, sheet for you guys.
Thank you.
On the company date was submitted, the bid amount, and if anybody needs, uh, bid specifications to look back to somehow.
There's two bids that don't meet the requirements.
Yes, two bid, uh, two bids, one of them, um, doesn't carry adequate insurance for the minimum, the other one, um.
Split it up how I read on the.
Yeah, he altered the bid, um, it's, should have been bid one, which encompassed several areas. He said he only wanted two or three of those areas and bid those individually. And then the second bid that he did, uh, he bidded a permo at a really high, very high amount and not per season. Um, so those two didn't meet our, our minimum, uh, requirements. Uh, that left two that did meet our, our requirements, um.
Ronnie Ogbon, Elite Lawn Care only wants to mow cemetery.
Correct.
And his bid for the cemetery is thirteen hundred dollars. I wouldn't do it for thirteen thousand. No, if he wants to do it for thirteen hundred, I would say.
Isn't that permo though?
Yeah, it's permo.
Permo.
And the, the other guy that qualified, if you take, uh, he's bidding twenty-five hundred for number seven. So if you take that out, it lowers his bid a little bit, but he was bidding twenty-five hundred for just number seven.
And he also, uh, had a little disclosure in his, uh, bid that I liked that, uh, area is six. Uh, for an extra five thousand dollars, people mow it every week and keep it at a very manageable height and that's a really unpopular.
Which one was area six?
South Lake.
Uh-huh, it's, it's highly utilized, I think they, uh.
Well, you don't wanna use that either.
Yeah, and he, and he's actually, um, the only one that has the equipment to do the job too. And he has twice the minimum requirement on insurance, he carries double.
Double now, right. Well, I'll put this in a form of motion. For number, uh, for the cemetery, area seven, I'm gonna put a form of motion to award that to Elite Lawn Care for thirteen hundred dollars. Permo for this mowing season is coming up.
Second, so we have a motion in a second to award the cemetery, area seven, to Elite Lawn Care for thirteen hundred dollars per mowing for, uh, the two thousand twenty-four mowing season. All those in favor?
Aight.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
And then the next one, I'm gonna put in a form of motion to award areas one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, and nine to Terrell Lawn Care, which are big, that time you take out twenty-five hundred dollars for seven, it comes down to thirty-five thousand dollars for the season.
Is what, where your bid is? Cause we can't.
No, there's a separate bid for the cemetery.
Oh, there's a separate, cause this has it all areas, including seven for this amount.
And, uh, I, I broke it up, so, um.
Well, then it'd be forty thousand probably.
Yeah.
Huh?
Yes, correct.
All right, well, I'll take the motion to give him all the areas except number seven for forty thousand dollars. And this is gonna cover from the mowing date from this year till the end of this season. That what you understood by the time we took that out?
Does that include area six?
No, we took area six out.
Oh, okay.
That's why I took twenty-five hundred dollars off of that forty-two five.
Okay, so for forty thousand.
Forty thousand, he's doing one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, and nine.
Right.
Right? He's good with that.
Okay, so you made that into a motion?
Yes, sir, I saw you.
That's two-year bid, right?
Yeah.
Yep, two-year bid.
It's in six, South Lake?
Uh, yeah, but he's got a separate bid in there for South Lake, it falls in underneath there. He's gonna mow area six weekly.
Oh, cool.
He's gonna mow, when he mows everything else weekly, and that's why his bid was a little higher.
Sure.
That's why we took it down to forty, or it went down to forty thousand because he, we took the twenty-five hundred out.
Yep.
So that's in a form of motion.
Okay. Second. So we have a motion in a second to award Terrell Lawn Care areas one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, and nine for forty thousand dollars for the two thousand twenty-four mowing season.
This is a two-year job.
Two-year contract for both.
Right.
All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Is that?
And that is everything I have.
City attorneys report.
Um, so Debbie asked if she could speak about the Holy Rosary Alley. And I said, uh, I gave some of my time to her.
Okay, John, I'm glad we played out, hoping that worked. So, was the council given a petition for vacation of the alleyways? We're talking about the two alleys that run underneath Hall of Records, the site of Hall of Records Gym and what was Hall of Records School that should have been handed back in nineteen fifty-nine.
We're doing light with Matt.
Quite, yeah, quite well.
Yes, so we're still, we're still talking the same map.
Yeah.
This one's prettier, it was done by an attorney in St. Louis.
Didn't that you do it though?
I don't wanna do it.
So, this is what the alleyway looks like. That they're going to be asking you to vacate, which is simply that's simply gonna take an ordinance, correct, John?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Now, what we're gonna do is vacate this.
Just say, goes away.
Yeah, and there's nothing gonna happen, I mean, nobody's gonna go in and put an alley down or nothing like that.
It's going back to the pre- Soders, in this case, that is burning that mud.
Yeah.
Because her alley was still there.
Right, right.
The rest of it's pace building. And then back to Hall of Records, which is the Jefferson City Diocese.
Who owns the face building now, you know?
Perfect.
Who owns the face building now?
Uh, you would ask me that.
Well, I was just curious, I hear I'm over there cloaking around.
They're not cloaking in a whole lot of it though.
No.
The name slips me at the moment, I'm sorry, I'll come up with it, I'll let you know.
I'm just mad they put the cable across and I have the open down there, I can park it all through.
Not as, not as friendly as last over.
No.
We have done that, but, so correctly if I'm wrong, John, we're we are awaiting the wording of the ordinance from the attorney for the diocese in St. Louis. Once we get that.
So I, I told him, he can either prepare it or he can send me the language he wants in it, I'll put it in an ordinance. Uh, either way, should be a pretty quick process. I think the council's already voted, I mean, forward.
Correct, correct, so this is just an update, we've got our paperwork in order except for the ordinance.
So we're all using the ordinance down.
Yep, so we would like to be on the agenda for the twenty-first next meeting, correct?
If you get to do guns or glue.
We're getting.
Huh?
I called the chancellor of the diocese today, we'll have it.
Okay.
So we would like to be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Please, that's our formal request, fine and right.
Sounds good, babe.
Okay, you guys have questions?
Yeah, we're
Okay, so this is the old gym, this is gone, this is, this is not. You can't see them, those alleys have been gone since nineteen fifty-nine.
Oh, okay. But I just wanna make sure there wasn't a sewer main or water main laid in that right of way, and that's what I, so it's not here?
No, no, it's underneath the gym.
It's underneath the gym.
Yeah, it's the gym. And it was underneath the school.
Three-inch gas line right there in that corner.
No, nowhere close to that.
Urban City when they put it in.
Nowhere close, yeah, oh, yeah.
I said there's right there at that corner where it comes down along pace and then this alley that goes that way.
Yep.
There's a three-inch gas line that goes right there underground.
Beside it.
Huh?
Beside this, right in it.
But it's way, it's down there, and we dug about twenty feet to get to it, but we dug. E. Jack Little and Ellis Smith put that in.
That's some history, John, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so the only other thing that I was gonna bring up is the county line road project. Uh, talked to Cindy Holtz at Park Twenty, Council of Governments, and at some point in the next few months, she's gonna sit down, or either come to a meeting or sit down with the mayor and council at the time and kind of talk about the way forward, the grant, if we're gonna continue with the project, there are grants that we need to submit for. There's also invoices, um, that we'll have to get paid. So I guess, I mean, this is only applied to Mr. Osborne, but the new council and mayor will have to make some decisions. on that issue, cause it's gonna be pretty expensive and you know, the city's gonna have to decide whether it's worth, uh, worth the money, so. But other than that, we, the other issue that I was gonna bring up was the annexation, which we already covered. That's all I got.
Okay, uh, cleaning and zoning, Jeff Botkins isn't here tonight. Parks and recreation, um, nothing. Economic development, that's under Jeff Botkins administrative report. We have not had an administrative committee meeting. Uh, but it is in the paper, right, for an administrative assistant and on, um, indeed. And then, uh, nuisance report.
Well, last page, got canceled.
Okay.
But we're gonna have a meeting, uh, on the eleventh.
Eleventh of March?
Yeah. Yeah, March. Five thirty.
Anything else? Okay, uh, George, do you have anything about water and sewer?
I do not at this point, no.
Okay, uh, Mr. Buckman with the airport, do you have anything to report on?
We, uh, lowered the fuel price down to five dollars to get more in line with the other air, airports around the area. Still, uh, making seventy cents a gallon over what the city has invested in. Um, the credit card machine on the side of the building is out in the open. When you, when the sun is in the afternoon, people can't see it to read it. I'm going to, uh, with your permission, build a kind of an awning over the top of it. I've got some lumber at home. I think I can come up with enough to cover it for ten. I don't know, something that the building inspector needs to look at it or something before I do it.
Okay, might not hurt.
Well, I can have permission to do that.
Okay.
Uh, the courtesy card's been used a few times and it's working out well.
Good.
So we appreciate that.
You get that built, you need some help hanging it. Talk to Kevin and then they'll help you hang that lock or whatever.
Okay.
Over the top of that.
Alright. I'm kind of a one-legged man. For a while here, I had my knee replaced six weeks ago or something. And, uh, I hate to bring it up, but I haven't been paid since the first of the year. I talked to the Jennifer about it and we're trying to figure it out.
Okay.
Also, uh, they couldn't come up with a ten ninety-nine for last year.
This ten ninety-nine had one, um, payment on it for the whole year, but that was because no records were sent to Tession.
I was gonna say, did any ten ninety-nines go out?
Yes, um, I did get some ten ninety-nines out. There's still more, um, that went out because I can't find records from prior to Tession for those ten ninety-nines. They could do it, but it, no, if we never submitted the information to them, they can't. That's what the problem is, is the information was never submitted to them. That's the same on the, um, vacation and stuff.
I know it's not your fault.
No, you walked into a street department. What?
We all gotta have a different session.
He's got a man that needs a raise. Can't we do it in open session?
I think it has to be done in open session, doesn't it?
Yeah, he wants a guy that he's got working for him.
Yeah.
Better let out.
Come on up to the.
Robert Bor.
Come on up here.
He started, you can hear me. He started, uh, my three guys are a month apart. He started the gas department and he got paid cheap when he started there compared to what they're paying now. So I wanna move him up even with my guys. It just consists of an eighty-six cent raise. You know, all of my three will be the same.
There's two gas guys that were moved from probation to regular. Um, but no raise was discussed or approved, so I would like that to be addressed as well, um, right now.
What?
Huh?
What?
I'll, I'll put in a form of motion that we give Robbie Bor his eighty-six cent raise and make him equal with the other two employees down there.
How much was it, eighty-six?
Eighty-six cents. All three of mine will be making same.
I'll second that. So we have a motion in a second to give Robbie Bor an eighty-six cent raise to make him equal with the rest of the employees of the street department. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you? Did you have something, Jennifer, that you wanna talk about raises?
She said yes.
It's to, um, gas employ, or three gas employees. The three new guys, they're all three new, aren't they?
Yes.
They're new. How long they been here?
They're right past their sixth.
Yeah, they're, they're off, they, it was voted last meeting or meeting for to take them off probation, but he didn't ask for a raise for them or, you know, specify. I, I believe it's a policy that's in.
Uh-huh, yeah, fifty cents after they finish their probationary period. So.
You want all three of them to get a raise?
Has their, uh, has their supervisor filled out the, he did any, the evaluation forms?
Yes, yep, I got the evaluation forms, um, and he got those filled out, um, but I think he just assumed you guys would know that it was, they changed it to raise and.
As long as they're doing a good job and he's happy with their.
Yeah, he, uh, he is. He indicated that they all three were, were deserving of it.
So I'll make a motion to give the three gas department employees that are new, um, a fifty cent per hour increase in their wages since they come off of their probationary period, and we probably need to retro pay that back to when they come off of their probationary period. So we have a motion in a second to, uh, retroactively pay the three gas department employees at fifty cents per hour to their wages, uh, as they have completed their probationary period and had a successful evaluation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, police department. Nothing? Okay, Zach's not here. Fire department?
We have none.
Nothing? Okay, that's it.
Martha, you got something?
No, I'm not.
You ready when you hand back?
Oh, you have something for the pool?
No.
No, okay.
I didn't want to miss it.
Mrs. Moss. Mrs. Moss, do you have anything about the pool?
No, he's got some bids and stuff he's gonna look at first before we're always, isn't it?
Since you're here, okay, so that's it. Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Huh?
Are you going into closed session?
Nope, we're done.
We're done.